All right, we'll call the meeting to order at seven and stand for the pledge. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, amendments to the agenda? Any amendments needed?
I'd like to add an execu- under executive session, the second one, an evaluation for employment appointment. One DSA three thirteen A three.
Okay, is there anything else? And this is the deal with the accounting.
Yeah, I saw that where it was.
Yeah, okay. Not the deal with, the discuss the accounting position. Okay, so motion by Glenn, is there anything else that needs to be changed or amended? Is there a seconded by Bob? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries. We do have an executive session for personnel. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to go into the executive session for personnel. IBSA three one three, I guess.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
A motion by Jay seconded by Glenn to go into executive session for a personnel discussion. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries.
This is all.
Okay, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Yep.
Second.
A motion by Bob seconded by Jay to come out of executive session at seven eleven. So I've got a short statement I want to read. After hearing the allegations of harassment and creating a hostile environment by the town clerk, the select board took immediate action to address the situation. Outside counsel was retained by the select board to investigate the claims. Attorney Gary Cuffer was hired to run the investigation on behalf of the select board. Gary interviewed multiple parties and submitted to the select board a written report of his findings. With his findings, there was no findings of harassment by the town manager. And the claims of a hostile work environment by the town manager were also not substantiated by the investigation. So with that, we'll move on to the next agenda item. First up, we have five minutes with Fred Kefron. Or as long as you need. Joe only gave you five minutes.
Joe gave me half an hour.
There you go. You've got the floor. Go ahead.
And as long as I stand, I got it. Okay, real quick, I got three things I got to address the board with.
Yep.
Number one, RC Flyers, we thank you for the use of the airport. We will continue with the upkeep and maintain safe procedures for all involved. We have contributed $500 to Fairhaven Concern and $250 to Fairhaven Department to show our appreciation for the privilege of being allowed to use the airport. We're going to have a fly-in on July seventh, uh, July fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. As in the past, we would request three or four days to have some campers up there. I'm talking three or four campers. And they're all self-contained. They'll be there Wednesday through Sunday. And we take care of everything a hundred percent. That's a request. You guys can let me know my. Concerts in the park, most fast I can, Joel.
You agree, Fred.
We will be having eight concerts this season, starting with the Army Band. On June thirtieth, we request to walk off in front of the War Memorial from three PM to ten PM to park the Army Bus and Equipment. We've done this before. I just requested. We would also request extra police presence for the evening. Good weather, please God, will bring upwards to fifteen hundred people to our town park. You guys don't, you've seen that.
Yeah.
And if we have good weather, we're going to have it. We have been averaging over six hundred people at our concerts. As in the past, police presence would be greatly appreciated at each concert. It's been fine. It's just good. I just want you to know, we appreciate it. For instance, on the, uh, the Army Band night, there will be over three, almost four thousand dollars in cash floating around. And you know as well as I do, I don't want to talk about it, you know what I'm talking about. The concert trailer will be in the Fairhaven Memorial Day Parade. And we'll also be participating in Bolton's July Fourth Parade. Any questions on anything I've done so far? It saddens me to tell you that we have lost one of our most valuable partners with the passing of Scott Law Bill. You all know it. I just need to bring it up. If anyone of you knows someone who could help us, please let me know. It's, it's just sad. One quick thing I need to address, and I'm going to ask, you got.
Five minutes already.
Yeah, that's it.
That's my wife. Are you guys getting well under the sleep we're being, right?
Tell her we said.
Yeah, all right. I got a situation and I want you guys to tell me what to do. We, two or three years ago, when the Army Band came in, we had the ladies auxiliary, and I don't know exactly what the name of them is, come in, they were going to do the fifty-fifty. And it was going to be for them, and it was going to be for the monument and the park that they're, they're building. But as you know, the monument fell apart. We couldn't have concerts, I hear. Long story short, what I did was, I arranged with our committee to give those girls, I don't have a better term, those folks, five hundred dollars to go towards the monument. I also, and the committee agreed, that we would take the five hundred dollar check and we would make it out to the memorial company, whoever's going to be the memorial company. Personally, I thought it was a great idea. But I have got some feedback and the people involved in this are not happy. They want the five hundred dollars and they've been in to talk to Joel about it. And I'm bringing it up to you guys, and whatever you guys say, that's what we're going to do. I don't, if it fails, where does the five hundred dollars go? Oh, well, it's coming back to us. Oh, okay. Well, if we just take the five hundred dollars, when it's all put together and this is where it's going, send them a check and we've got the money in the account. It's, I can't say is it saved, but it's there. And I need your advice on what you would like me to do. Do I just keep it the way it is? Or do you want me to write up a thing, give it to Joel, get it signed, and send him a check for five hundred dollars and hope they do it? And the money, it's the end of my story.
Okay.
You got to make that decision.
Thank you.
All right, let's start with the last one. Can you kind of go over that again, just so?
Now, listen, you got to pay attention.
What? You were on minute six.
Okay.
No, I'm joking.
What part do you want to?
Who, who got the money, who you would like to, the whole money situation, what was that one more time?
On this five hundred dollars?
Yes, yes.
The concert committee
Yeah.
has collected this money.
Yeah.
And it sits in our account in the other room. It just sits there.
Yeah.
It doesn't show five hundred dollars to go here. We've got ten or twelve thousand dollars sitting in there.
Yeah.
But five hundred of it, by the committee, the concert committee, has said that's going to go to the War Memorial when we find out who's going to build it. And we're just going to send them a check. And I've let the committee, that committee down there, now will send you the check or will send it to whoever you want us to, but the check will be made out to Joel Blow's Memorial Company. I just, I just think it's a, a, never mind. I just think, I think it's the right way to do it.
Okay, Glenn, do you?
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to think, what have we do, what have we done in the past? And I take it, it's the American Legion Women's Auxiliary that's.
I'm guessing that's the name.
I, I'm, I'm, that's what I.
It's kind of a subset of them.
And.
That's working out.
And the only thing, my only two cents on this one right here is that I know the concerts in the park had some money that was earmarked for lighting. And we took and we set it in a separate account and earmarked it.
And it's still there.
Still sitting there. The money, the money, money's sitting there, it's there, so.
Is it twenty-five? You lied to me.
But you notice I didn't even throw a dollar amount out. I didn't know. But, but I'm just saying that, that seemed to work and that's for around the park. So I'm saying if the five hundred dollars was, I, I'm still earmarked for the memorial. I, if, if, the, the thing about writing the check directly to the memorial company, I'm saying, I, I like to think we, we have people that we, we trust are going to do what they said they're going to do. Until they give us reason not to trust they're going, I, so I'm, I'm coming back saying, wouldn't we, my only recommendation is, why wouldn't you take the five hundred dollars and say, all right, American Legion Women's Auxiliary, this five hundred dollars, understand it's earmarked for the memorial. I, are we getting all wrapped up just in?
The only thing we got to make sure we understand is it is a separate account handled by two or three ladies. Help me, you, you know.
I'm looking to Legion.
I don't have, I don't have any concern with those guys. They're going to do what they want, what they can do. And they will do that. And if they don't, if, if it doesn't come up, they'll be, they'll be fine.
They'll give it back.
There won't be a problem. I think you can give them the money and do that without any trouble.
Whatever you guys say.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Honestly.
As long as it's earmarked.
Yeah, as soon.
It's, uh, to, it, it's not the Legion, it's like, it's a subset, they're called the Hometown Heroes. And they, they are a five oh one. They do have their own.
They do, okay. I didn't know that, but that's. I, the people that are running it are, are, are fine people and, and they will, and they will.
And I'm not questioning that.
Oh, I understand that. I just, you want to be straight up and I get what you're doing.
You know, we worked hard for this money and I'd like to know where it's going to go, that's all.
What we used, I mean, you're on the right track. When we, when we, when the Suns give, um, give, um, scholarships, we write it to the school that they're going to. We don't write it to the kids. You know, I, I get where you're coming from, but I don't think you have to worry about these people.
So would we make the check out to Hometown Heroes?
Uh, yeah, it would be there, whatever their, whatever their court goes, but yes. I, that's, that's how I'd do it. I, I wouldn't have a problem with that personally.
I wouldn't either.
All right. Does that give you direction?
There's the direction right there.
All right.
I will make out a, a thing within the next couple of days, Joel, and I'll. Whenever we make any funds, I make a, what do you call it, Joel, purchase order? I make a purchase order, Joel signs it, we bring it in, we got a hundred percent record of every penny that goes anywhere, so.
Okay.
I will take care of it in the next couple of days, Joel.
Okay.
We're all on the same page. I just want to make sure we're all in agreement, that's all. I'm done.
Is there any issue with Fred continuing from three, three PM to ten PM setting up in that area of the park? Okay, so you're good there. And then what about the camping requests for three or four campers up at the airport?
That's always worked out as well, right?
That's what you've done in the past.
Like always, we're doing absolutely nothing. We haven't always done before and we take care of everything and.
I don't have a problem with campers, but I do have one, I've had quite a few requests about her, questions about it. It seems like the RC Flyers have taken over the airport. I was up there last week when I got a complaint because they wanted to walk their dog down the runway and they were up there practicing. It was always my understanding that they were going to be doing, out there on weekends. And it seems like they've taken over the airport. And I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers if they want to walk their dog down the runway that they can't if they're up there practicing their plane.
We agree with you a hundred percent, except you, we got to kind of know about it because if we kill one of their dogs, we got to.
When I went up there, the signs, this was in the middle of the week and you had signs posted not to, not to come on here because they were flying. And I just felt that this whole thing started with a weekend deal and now it's all through the week. You're up there anytime they want to go up there, they're up there. And I think somewhere, you got to come to some middle here because, they don't own it, you don't own it.
Oh, absolutely correct.
It's a town property and it's, you know, either, there should be a schedule written when they're going to be there so people know or something because, um, this lady was pretty upset. She said, and I said something, she said, but I want to walk my dog. I don't want the dog in the dog park. I want to be able to walk the dog. And I think the people should have that opportunity.
I couldn't agree with you more, except for safety. We've got to be careful.
I understand.
What would you like for a sign? The, the sign doesn't say, don't go. It just says, make sure we know you're coming.
Yeah, but the thing of it is, my, my problem is that it's anytime you want to go there, they're there. I mean, if somebody wants to go fly their plane in the middle of the week, they go up there and do it. You know, I mean, I just feel there should be timeframes when they can be there and can't be there. That's my feelings. I don't think they should be, I don't think it should be open to the RC Flyers anytime they want to go there. And I think that's what's happening now. That's what's been happening, so.
Okay.
Would, would it be reasonable, Fred, to, because I know you're being hit a timeframe that's there to talk to some of the RC Flyers, I don't know. The, the concern is that, that airport, I think you're going to get with, with the grand opening, the dog park and with more, you're going to get more and more use hopefully of our Fairhaven Recreation Area at the airport. So having, uh, having a, knowing that these time slots are when, and if there is, I'm not, I'm not quite there yet of saying, no, middle of the week flying, but I'm going, could we come up, was, talk with folks to say, are there certain days in the week and between these hours? So that, I think everyone, it helps us all work together so we're not something, I know what we're all trying to do and we're trying to make sure no one gets hurt. I, I get that.
Hundred percent correct. And we will do anything that's necessary and I'm only one member, right?
That, that's, that's why I don't.
I would have had our president here if I'd known this subject was going to.
Well, I just feel it. I just feel taxpayers come first. And I, I just feel that they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be shut out of the place up there to walk their dog if you want to walk it.
No, agree.
And I just feel that there should be a schedule or some sort. I don't think they should be, they'll be there every day of the week. Or just come and go as they please. I don't think that's the way it should be. But that's just my opinion. I've had some complaints, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Joe, is that something you could talk to Fred about possibly, just see what?
I'm thinking along the line, just real quick, I mean, I, I kind of got blindsided here. I kind of think that if we did put a new sign up, we will stop flying when anybody walks up and down or if somebody wants to drive up the airport, they drive, still drive up there. We wait. It's just that safety is, I can't imagine sitting here saying to you guys, well, guess what? We had an accident and somebody, the dog got killed or something. Can we put a sign down there just to, to let us know? I mean, and I, I will let the guys know that, hey, they already know, but I just.
But it just feels like we've taken it over. You're putting a building up, up there now. You know, and like I said, you go up there and they're there anytime you want to be there. And I just, I don't feel it's fair to the taxpayers. I think that they should have the opportunity to use the airport any way they want to. And, uh, you know, it, it was a privilege for you guys to come in here. And I just feel that little by little, you're just taking more advantage. That's all I, that's all I got to say.
Well, you're talking about the building up there, Jay. The reason we put the building up there was because we moved it so the dog park could go in, so we didn't infringe on them.
But you still had the building there before, Fred. You just, you put the building up there, you know, it's like you're taking it over and that's what, that's.
The building was, was in the old building. It was in the old building and you wanted to tear that down, so we moved it out there. Then the dog park went green, so we moved it up. Oh, geez, I don't know. I don't want to cause any trouble.
I don't either. I, I don't either, but I just feel that, I just, my, personally, I just feel you're, they're taking over the airport slowly. And it's, I don't think it's fair. I mean, we let you go in there so you could do this and people enjoy watching. Don't get me wrong. But I don't think they should have free run of, of the place.
Well, we don't feel that we do and we also are, try to be very careful so that nobody gets hurt.
Okay. Do you want to just, I mean, discuss back and forth and see what, if you can put a schedule or some kind of way that everybody can have access up there? Okay, all right. Any other questions for Fred?
Nope.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
You got it.
All right, now, next appointment was with David Hoppe from the Boys and Girls Club discussion. So welcome, David.
Thank you.
I didn't know, Joe, do you want to kind of do an intro and kind of?
Sure, uh, and this was precipitated by, by me about the, the information we got about Boys and Girls Club. They received a grant from the school, and correct me if anything I say is wrong. Uh, they received a grant from the school. Um, they moved the, a summer program out to Castleton where they're going to do their summer program. Um, and they stopped doing their summer program here in Fairhaven. As somebody that works in town and has been working with Boys and Girls Club for a couple of years and working with the rec department, I was, I was shocked and I'm going to be very honest, upset and disappointed that the Boys and Girls Club, after asking for double the amount of money from Fairhaven residents from five thousand to ten thousand, moved their summer program out. Our residents have been reliant on that program since 2017. It wasn't just last year we tried. And our numbers were going up and then to, to pull the rug out from under us after receiving grants and doubling their request was, again, I was very upset and I still am, so.
So David, uh, do you want to give a, take a minute and kind of introduce yourself and kind of go over what your,
Sure.
program's about and kind of what the plan is for Fairhaven and Fairhaven kids?
All right, I'd be happy to do that. And thank you very much for giving me a chance to talk. More than happy to do that. So, um, I have been here for a couple of years. And, um, I don't want to dispute statistics. I actually looked up, um, what records we had of the Fairhaven Club. And, um, it is clear that it started in seventeen, eighteen school year. Now, I found no record of, and, and this is what all of my staff has told me, that there had ever been a summer program here with the club. So I, to my knowledge, experimented doing one for the first time last summer. If that is incorrect, I'm certainly not trying to deceive anybody, but it is my understanding and I checked records and that we'd never tried that before. And, um, what I wanted to do with the summer program in particular was just try to grow in the same way that we had grown the rest of the, the school year program. So there is a summer rec program, I'm sure I don't have to tell you guys about that, that's very successful. And Nicole Rice actually worked for us. So we had a great relationship with her. The last thing I want to do is compete with a program like that. So her program goes to one, so we had our program go from one to five thirty for anybody that needed all-day care. As it turned out, and that was basically free last year due to a, a state funding stream that we got. And, um, we had, I think maybe twenty kids sign up for that. And we had about, I probably averaged twelve or thirteen kids a day. So there was extremely low turnout and, you know, that's relative to the rec department program, which was eighty. Just to give you, you know, it wasn't like there was lots of those kids staying. So as far as I was concerned, that wasn't really a successful program. Um, and, you know, one of the things that Boys and Girls Clubs do, not, this isn't about this organization, which is nationwide, is we want to be in places where we can serve as many kids as possible because we try to do it as, at lower rate as possible. So, um, I actually thought it might be helpful, and I could just hand you several of these. This is some statistics from this school year. So, um, as I had, uh, as I had talked to, well, just different people in Slate Valley and as we have worked through this, this was, uh, by far the most successful year in the club's history in the school. And if you look, um, down at the bottom, that's our attendance. Now, we only have through April, but you can see it starts, so there's, for each month, there is the average daily attendance. That's what the ADA stands for. And then the total enrollment would be the second one. So as you can see, the attendance goes up as the months go forward and there's more and more members. So, um, now there's lower months and those are, as you can guess, those would be times where there were COVID outbreaks, where whole classes were sent home. There were times where we had to close due to staffing because of COVID. And then recently, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there was this huge flu outbreak. So you can see in the last month, we averaged sixteen there, which was the lowest yet this year. But regardless of that, we now have fifty members. They pay no mem, well, they paid a one-time membership fee, but there's no weekly fee at all. And, um, and that's been a very successful year and I'm really pleased with it. And I would think, uh, two things could be different in the future. Which is one, that we won't have all these COVID issues. And we could have more consistent staffing because the staffing was just very difficult this year. I don't mean in this club, I mean in all of them. The turnover, it's the same phenomenon that we all know about across the country. So there was a big staffing turnover. So if we can settle into that, if we can, uh, you know, not have COVID outbreaks in the school and then be allowed to have a little more space in the school because at Fairhaven, we're limited to basically the cafeteria. So that, that, we have to have no more than thirty kids and that's just by law. We can't do that. So we're hoping that as that goes, we could easily expand that number and certainly that average could be higher. And there were many days that were in the upper twenties. So in general, I feel like this school year was great and I look forward to it being much better. Um, as far as the summer goes, as I say, the first time was a trial run and I didn't feel like it was at all successful. When, um, when we got this, we just got a new grant. This is something that has nothing to do with anything we've discussed so far. Which is a, it's a federal grant. It's a Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant. It's the same kind of funding that funds Tapestry, by the way, just so you know how that works. It's, it's federal funding and it comes through AOE in Vermont. So we were the first non-school to get one of these grants in many years, maybe a decade, I don't know. And very few non-schools get them. So we were not, we were advised strongly by AOE not to apply for all, all four schools because that was my strategy, was to go in and go, let's put one of these sites in all the schools. And they said, you're probably not going to get it if you do that. You, you need to start off smaller. And not only that, you need to have a lot of space dedicated to these programs in the schools for us to fund them. So I was basically left with Castleton and Orwell to start this, to make sure we could secure this grant. Because our odds of getting it were not very good and we were able to do that. So what that did was set the stage because if we can do this successfully, we could then apply for a second one. And that has been my strategy all along. And obviously, the next part would be right here. Which would be a way to get, basically, that's a five-year grant. In, in this case, it's, um, well, it's quite a bit of money. I'd rather not say that publicly. It's not, it's a public thing. It's not like it's a private one, but, um, until it's, we're going to make an official announcement and things like that. But it's, it's a lot of money over five years. My plan is to expand that into Fairhaven next year. And so we have to do the first year really good and apply for a second grant. So I've shown you these statistics on the bottom. Numbers don't necessarily speak to, to what our performance is, but this was a survey that we did by request of Slate Valley. Casey O'Meara, I would guess, you guys probably know who he is. He wanted to do that for his own funding needs, so he submitted the questions and we just polled all of our parents. We did it in every school, but I just wanted to show you the Fairhaven results. So you can see that it was, it was, I'm pretty proud of that, that the parents are, were happy with what we had given them. And then down at the bottom. And then down at the bottom, there's just some written answers and I kind of tried to condense it down because it would be a big laundry list. But I thought that that was, I was very pleased with how that went. It is not ideal, mostly due to the staff turnover. I would really like to improve that. And to just be able to expand our programs and be able to serve more children. And just to give you an idea, Slate Valley as a whole, we had just this club before I arrived. And then we, as Joe mentioned, the administration decided to fund all four schools. And so, we went from serving about fifty kids or less a day pre-COVID, before I, you know, long before. And we served three hundred a day. We had three hundred members and we served over two hundred a day as an organization. In Slate Valley, over a hundred and fifty kids a day. And anyway, we look forward to that being even better next year because we definitely had a whole lot of hiccups. And, you know, with growth comes some difficulty. But in any case, that's pretty much it and I am happy to answer any questions and I would thank you again for giving me time to talk.
All right, thank you.
I think the main question here is what Joel spoke of. You're moving a program in Castleton. How are the kids from Fairhaven going to get there?
If there is a need for that, I am happy to try to arrange transportation because I have spoken with the school about that and that is something that we could absolutely do. If that, if we have a need for kids that need to get over there. And by the way, one last thing I did forget about that. With the Twenty First Century Grant, starting next year, I will be required to have a summer program in Castleton and Orwell. That's just built in. They say, you know, if you are funded in this way, you have to have a summer program. That's, that was another thing that I was trying to address. But I'm more than happy to do anything we can to get daily transportation.
My feeling is if there's one child that wants to go to it, you should be providing transportation for him.
Well, if we have the means to do that, we would.
Yeah, but the town has given you ten thousand dollars. And I feel that our kids deserve to get a benefit of that ten thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
And if there's, I don't care if there's one kid, I feel you should be transporting them wherever your programs are.
I hear you.
And myself, if that doesn't happen, I can never see supporting another bowl to have you have money.
I hear you.
What do you do with the ten, with the ten thousand that's appropriated? Is that for summer programs only or is that?
No, no, that's for the, for the school year. That was, that actually had begun before we had summer. At least it was when I first got here. This was a new thing. I had never even seen such a thing before as the towns do here. So, that began right away or had already begun long before I was here, I think. The amount, I believe, which I'm sure Joe knows better than me, apparently was increased, which I did not, I do remember that when I first arrived. That, but in any case, back to the issue of money, just so you're aware, and I really am not trying to... The cost of that club for this year was eighty to ninety thousand dollars, just so you know. And that was to run for the school year only. That doesn't count the summer. That was a rough estimate. We don't break out the budget that way, but I was, for other purposes, I had itemized certain costs for each club so that we could determine what to do in the following years. And that was our rough estimate, it's about eighty to ninety thousand to run that club for a year. So, I think ten thousand dollars is an incredibly generous donation and I think that that is a, it's... Well, as I say, I had never, I've done this work for two decades and I've never seen that and it's a wonderful thing. And by the way, one of the things that Joe and I discussed, because that's really how the conversation started, at least as far as I understood, was that there was apparently some discussion about the fact that we would close this club. I can tell you, as far as I know, that was never even anything that was brought up in a discussion. I have no intention of closing this club. We've never debated closing it. I think it's a, it's a very good place and I'm not sure why that might have been mentioned, but that absolutely was never a consideration.
Just a quick, when you're talking money and everything, I'm not that knowledgeable. I can tell you my concern when I saw S R three money and, and I, at the school board level and they said something like two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Boys and Girls Club. And then I, when I understand, I joined Joe and being just a little upset when I'm saying a town that's been supporting the Boys and Girls Club and not, and having, having a summer program, but eighty folks, it's a pretty well-attended summer program, which is great. It's needed.
It is.
But it almost sounded like the Boys and Girls Club was going to go in competition and do another summer program. Now, you did a good job explaining, one goes for a certain time and then you pick up the other time, so that's all well and good there. But I still look at it, it's not only the ten thousand dollars that we doubled the five thousand to the Boys and Girls Club. And then something that losing anything doesn't seem to make sense to me. Putting, putting, I know you mentioned the school board, it sounded like wanted one in each of the, and sounds like Boys and Girls Club would like, but the grant you got said two.
Well, there's two different funding streams. So, when the school decided to fund the clubs, that was in four sites and that was just the school year. That was the school year only for Fairhaven, Castleton, Benson and Orwell. The Twenty First Century funding was something we went to the, that had nothing to do with the school, other than the partnership. That came second. That hasn't actually begun yet. The idea behind that was if the school could start the clubs, I would then try to go get replacement funding so we could continue to go and Twenty First Century was a portion of that.
My concern, just let me get all done, is because I, eventually, these funds and grants run out, like your five-year grant.
Right.
And if those programs continue, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars to run the program. And that, I don't know how you get it without getting it out of your taxes. And I'm going, boy, I'm great that it's out there, but quite frankly, I'd want a heck of a lot more discussion before my taxes were going to be affected by that large of amount. So, I'm concerned on that end, not that I'm holding you, but I'm disappointed if we're losing any of the coverage that we thought we had, that's disappointing. If the transportation issue, I get it, that if you get more, you can do more and probably do a better job. So, if anyone that's interested in Fairhaven, if they were, if there was a bussing, like you finish and then you, yeah, a bus, you go and you finish out the day and, and there seems to be some things that haven't quite been worked out yet, is what it sounds like.
I, well, I'm certainly happy to, to take kids from Fairhaven to Castleton if there is a need for that. I would have to figure out how to do that, but there are different options that we could look into. And I think, and we're certainly, we want to serve as many kids as possible. And we're not trying to actively recruit kids from Fairhaven to come there, but they would certainly be welcome. We don't have any, you know, there's no jurisdiction in any Boys and Girls Club.
Well, if you're not trying to get the kids from Fairhaven, why are we giving you ten thousand dollars for here?
Because this, the summer here, the rec program here, I don't want to take kids out of that.
But you had a program here after one o'clock. Is that going to stop now?
That program, we ran as an experiment last year and as I say, we got very few kids.
Is that program going to stop this year?
It was not my intention to try that again this year.
So, our kids in Fairhaven are out of luck because there's no place for them to go unless you can give transportation for them to go to Castleton.
That's right, in the afternoon.
My question is, why are we giving ten thousand dollars?
For the rest of the year, Jay, that's...
But we still have, there's not going to be anything here in Fairhaven School?
For summer program, right?
But there is a presence.
But my question is, how did you fund the, the summer program last year?
There was a state grant, which was called, it was a, it was a special summer-only grant for any, they kind of opened it up. There were people that had never served kids and they gave up to seventy-five thousand dollars. It was called Summer Matters for All. It was specific CARES Act money, I believe, which was to get kids back outside after they've been cooped up. And so, tons of people got this and we took that money and we said, "We're going to put it toward tuition so nobody has to pay and we get as many kids as we can." And even with no cost last summer, we had, we had very little turnout. But that was entirely financed that way last summer and anyway.
So, take the summer program out of it, Boys and Girls Club in Fairhaven.
Yes.
Where are you located? What are you offering during the whole year?
So, we open, every day that school is open, we, we open until six-thirty. We have a snack after dinner, or I'm sorry, after school and we do serve dinner. We're trying to work out, in fact, I met with them today, to try and work out so the cafeteria can get its meals directly so they would be a little bit higher quality. I'm working on that. That hasn't been the best, but we're, we're trying to improve that. We, we certainly give academic support. We have recreation. We go outside when, when we can. We get a little bit of gym use time, but all of the numbers that are down here, that's how many kids we serve. And we try to be open as, you know, we did have to close sometimes, you know, before COVID, I had never just shut a club. Just, "Sorry, I can't be open today." And we had to do that several times, including recently, we had to close for a whole week. But other than that, we have, you know, three or four adults, trained staff, that work there every day. The unit director, as we call the, sort of the manager in charge, has to have a degree, has to be well-trained in youth development. And, and I think that, well, you can see from the, from the survey results, the parents were generally pleased with what we were doing there.
And the reason I ask the question is because if parents have, were planning on, you know, there's this timeframe after school that the Boys and Girls Club filled a void.
Right.
And they filled the void last summer, even though, and before, it sounds like it ended at the end of the school year, started up again when the school year starts, but is there anything in the, in the summer?
There might be, well, typically, there's a few days. I think that the rec department has a bigger gap because I don't pay super close attention to their schedule. But I think she has a little bit more of a limited budget and can't start right away. As where, we try to just do it to fill the whole gap of the summer as best we can, although there is a week or two at the end that we, that we don't have. So, anyway, I hope I answered your question.
No, that's, I, I just knew that staffing was an issue.
Oh, yeah.
Well, when you said staffing's an issue, and you, do you already have a presence in Castleton?
I'm sorry, right now?
Right.
Yes.
Because I'm just, I'm just wondering if your staff, if you, if you go and run a summer program in Castleton?
Well, this year...
What do you have for staff left?
This year is a whole different ballgame because now we have six sites and we don't open them, we only open three in the summer. So, we have to kind of see how many kids we need because, because they're licensed programs, so there is a mandated ratio. So, we, once we see kind of how many, we may not have staff left because we also open eight hours, so there's like two shifts of staff too. So, it's a much tougher thing to cover. But I'm hoping that we have enough and I'm actually talking to folks in all the schools that may want just summer employment. Thank you.
Other question?
One more question. What's the, what's the tuition for, for a kid to be in the Boys Club?
So, this past year, when Slate Valley had funded it, it was fifty dollars and that was it for the whole, whole school year. So, that's what this was. Now, because we have to enact this license, we are not going to charge anybody a weekly fee. We are, we have a set fee because as part of licensing, you need to do that. But what we're going to do is we're going to say, "You will either qualify for state subsidy, which means you don't have to pay. We will get a scholarship, which means you don't have to pay. Or we will have a sliding fee scale where you won't pay, money will not stop you from coming. So, you will, we'll negotiate with you and what you can afford is all you will have to pay. So, if someone comes to us and says, "We cannot pay anything," then we will figure out a way to get them in the club.
So, you have a, you have a scholarship program or a subsidy of some sort?
Yes, yes.
Because as far as I'm concerned, the ten thousand dollars paid for that would be fine.
Absolutely. And one of the things that I feel very strongly about, which I've tried to, this is, it's very different coming to this area where lots of after-school programs have a weekly fee. And I have never worked with that before. And so, one of my biggest goals since I have gotten here is try to figure out how to get out of that because nobody can afford that. I know I couldn't. I mean, I have a pretty good job and if I had to pay fifty or sixty dollars a week for, for one or two kids every week, I know I couldn't afford, I mean, I could if I had to, but it would not be an easy expense. And I have never run after-school programs like that, so that is my goal. I have not quite achieved it, but that is what I want and that's, again, why I, I thank you for that donation. And I promise you, I, I think those, that is a fantastic thing. I, as I say, I've never seen towns before coming to Vermont that do that and several of them do. Mendon does that, Chittenden does that, Fairhaven. And once, you know, I'm sure we will look into future other towns wherever we are. But that's, I thank you very much for that.
All right, good. Appreciate it. We thank you for coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Approval of the minutes from April twenty-seventh. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Jay, seconded by Glenn to approve those minutes. Any changes or corrections needed?
There was one spelling. It's not a big deal.
I can't spell, I'm sorry.
It was grading. You're going to spell grading right. It's not a big deal. That just shows I read them.
Yes, it does.
You did it on purpose.
Yes, yes, check it. I'm checking. Thank you, thank you.
I circled it, circled it, circled it.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. The May third minutes.
Make a motion to approve the May third minutes as written.
Is there a second? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Bob, to approve the May third minutes. Changes or corrections to those? Good, okay, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Five minutes for public comment.
We're already there.
We're already at public comment. We already had a schedule that four minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, so usually I come here, there are bones of contention, everything. Today is strictly a progress report that we're doing well with the dog park.
Good.
I do have, I don't know if any of you have seen these, but we do have the posters we made up. That's around, just so you can see. We have all kinds of really great, whoops.
Careful.
We have all kinds of really great stuff planned. We're providing a barbecue hot dog lunch. We're going to have games with prizes for people and their dogs. Representative Helm and Canfield are going to give a short speech at the beginning of the opening ceremony. Our fundraising has been really good. We've managed to pay our bills for having the sand put in, having the water put in. That's great, having that done. And we're even going to buy a mower, a battery-powered mower that we can store in the pavilion so we can mow it and the town DPW is not going to have to mow the area. We're getting a weed whacker, obviously, they don't do that, but, you know, we'll take care of the, we will whack the weeds. We will take care of the grounds. So, I just wanted to let you know that we appreciate your working with us on it. We're really looking forward to the grid opening and we're hoping that some of the board members will come because it would look good to have some of the town people there. It is June fifth.
Yep, I think at least one or two of us will try to get it.
That would be great, we'd like. Appreciate that. And everybody that's been, because I've been up there all the time working and people come in and they'll say, "This is the nicest dog park I've been in. This is really nice. They love the setup" and so, we're happy.
I can, you know, Lynn, Kristen, Rob, like you were all, you know, it was a long road. It was a long road.
Took a while.
To see how it came out, you know?
See all good things come to a good ending here.
Yeah, so we want to say thank you and just wanted to give a little happy report instead of a, you know, let's have some more problems.
Ours is so much nicer than West Rutland. It really is. So, thank you guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Well, thank you guys, put that all together. I think it's a great asset for the town and I've heard a lot of good compliments already about it. And it's not officially, officially open, but there's definitely good, good for the town.
It's done most of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. So thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Rod, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I have a very shy friend who asked, they, they have a, uh, a family member at the, who currently resides at the Fairhaven Cemetery. And they want to put, plant a plant, or small shrub near the headstone of their family member's grave. And they asked me, do I need to get a permit? Like, I don't know, I don't know. You've just gotta be prepared for the possible inevitable getting chopped down by a lawnmower.
Growth, yeah.
Uh, but I couldn't answer the question. I've never, never heard that asked.
I don't think there is, you don't have to, they can put them in.
Yeah, I don't think there is.
I don't think there is.
I would think a,
Not in Cedar Grove there isn't, I don't think.
I would think a shrub would be less desirable than just flowers or plants or something. Because, I mean, how do you, how do you tell them, you can do a shrub, but it can't overwhelm?
Yeah, well, there's, there's lots of them there.
Are there?
Yeah, there is, and, uh, I, I didn't ask when I planted a lilac, so.
Okay, so no, no restrictions.
Yeah, there's nothing that you're aware of, right?
I don't believe there is.
I don't believe there is.
The cemetery committee that we have should be,
There's bylaws.
But there is bylaws?
There is bylaws that should be changed.
I, you know, that's one of those ask forgiveness rather than permit thing, I think.
All right.
Yeah, I just said, well, just be prepared for, I mean, it could get chopped down.
And if it comes too, too big, but it's probably not going to.
Two, I believe it would be trimmed back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if you get down there, there's all kinds of shrubs. There's people, there's stuff that's been there a hundred years.
Okay.
Uh, do you want us to send you the bylaws?
It's, can I just Google it?
On the, on the town website?
It's on the town website, yeah. There's a, yeah.
Um, anybody else for public comment? Okay. Um, department head reports? Joe, do you wanna do, uh, police department?
I think we have.
Yeah, no, the PD is here.
Still online?
If we can, if we can unmute him. Do, 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 do.
Hello?
Hey, man. Hey, Bill, can you hear us?
Yeah. Hi, Ken.
All right, hey, uh, go ahead and, uh, if you wanna go over your report.
Um, it's a, a pretty monumental two weeks. Um, no rep. We played a few fingerprinting, we rolled out traffic tickets. Um, I put a reporter and everybody in box and wrote down, we, we had a lot of incidents, but nothing more quality of life than, than anything else in the last two weeks. Quality of life incidents versus anything major.
Okay. Uh, questions for Bill? Joe?
Bill, how fast will the speed cart show I'm going? Will it go over a hundred?
Will it, what will it jump or ease?
Yeah, will it show that I hit more than a hundred miles an hour?
It, it will record every traffic, um, or every vehicle that goes through there, regardless of their speed. You know, it'll, it'll put it out in the graph, so you can see a, a top end versus a low end. And it counts, um, the number of vehicles that come across the, um, the map of the machine.
Where is this?
It's out my way to work.
By me?
It's cur, it's currently out near, um, Green and Boulder Road. We have some complaints from the old inn owner of speed, so we put the machine out there for a little while.
He'll be, he'll be happy to know you're there now.
That's what I'm saying, Bill, if I, if, if say somebody comes through there at a hundred miles an hour, will it save one hundred on the speed card itself?
No, it will not show it on the cart. And at, at one point, the cart will shut off, it won't show a top speed. Um, that eliminates the, um, you know, video game effect, people trying to set a record.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions? Yep, Bob, or Jay?
What's the deal with Devil's Bowl Speedway again?
There's a beep in the background, I'm not sure where it is.
Okay, what's the deal with the Devil's Bowl Speedway? Why are we back, why are we back up there again?
Um, it's my team, it'll be for the town manager. He's the one that actually approved it, not me.
That, that was me.
We got a gross claim, Mr. Grumout. Um, town manager Gunter set a pay rate of seventy-five dollars an hour. And the contract was with the town and, um, Mr. Grumout.
Well, we're not a for-hire department. I don't know how many times we're gonna have to try to get this across to people. We're supposed to be taking care of the taxpayers in Fairhaven, not Devil's Bowl Speedway, not Benson, not every other town. And this, every time this has been brought up, it's been turned down by the select board. And not even have it brought before the select board, I think it was pretty, it was wrong.
Before you jump in, I, I, Jay doesn't speak for me. I think that the police department making revenue is a good thing, you know, but you and I have always disagreed.
But you wait a minute. It increases our liability factor every time we go somewhere.
I don't agree with,
It doesn't?
I, I know more than the liability if they're sitting right out front, but, but to that effect,
You're out of town.
I'm not sure that the past, was this something asked at the test, pass board?
The, the, they did bring to the Bents, the board, they brought this, we, we brought this, not this, no. We brought Benson to the board, the board voted no to,
The devil's been to the board also.
Not, not to my own,
But that was, that's why I wanted the pass board. It is, uh, different things have come back, and I'm just saying, and if, if it would come to this board right here, I fully support us having and making some revenue and helping not that three hundred fifty thousand dollar, uh, police budget, help us with that budget. It's, it's the right thing to do. I disagree with you all along on that, Jenny.
One lawsuit and it's over with.
Uh, you're, no more, no more liability that they're right out front.
You're in town. You're not out of town. You're out of town with these people.
Again, we'll just agree to disagree.
It's always perfect, so it's not right. I don't care. We're not a for-hire department.
So, Jay, I, I knew this would be a point of contention. I know there are folks that,
I don't wanna know why you didn't come to the board.
Uh, I, so, as the town manager, I do have the right to sign those types of contracts.
Don't you think you should discuss it with the board first? You can have the right to sign it, but I think you should come to the board. It's, we're the ones responsible for this stuff.
So, I, I did sign it, um, and I did that because I can't look at, I can't look at Fairhaven residents and tell them, I, listen, I, I hear so often, our taxes are too high, my water is too high, it's too expensive to live here. I can't look at people and then tell them, yeah, this guy was gonna give me twelve hundred dollars in profit, but I didn't take it. I thought, no, I don't want your money.
How many cars we lost, we know the town?
We haven't lost any car.
Oh, yes, we have. We lost one in Wells. I believe we lost one in Castleton. So, I'm just, it's my point of view, and Fairhaven, I don't agree with, but we are not a for-hire department. And somewhere, we gotta get that through everybody's head here.
I, I knew this was, I knew this was,
My question would be, I, I would like to see what we're gonna offset. Because generally, when things like that happen, it just becomes extra money.
So, what,
So, show me, show me the, the, the offset, and I'll be a lot happier, but still not happy. I, I don't, I don't like, I'm, I'm on Jay's side with this one. I don't like us, I don't like us being for-hire.
So, so when this, this money goes right into our general fund, just like as revenue piles up, um, when we do the budget next year, we'll have that extra fourteen hundred. So that's fourteen hundred less we have to, we have to ask taxpayers for. And it's not a lot of money, I understand, but every tanker of water, if we sell a tanker of water, every fourteen hundred dollars that we can get from the police, every fifty-five dollar ticket we can get, a speeder going through town, it's that much more that knocks our taxes down.
It has any,
Well, not, we're not gonna be Bridgewater, don't get me wrong.
Don't start that.
No, no, but you know what I'm saying, it's every little bit helps, and, and I know it's a point of contention, but unless we start, unless we start somewhere, we're not gonna be able to, to get that under control. And that was my reasoning, Jay, is,
Still isn't right. It should've came to the board.
I, I,
Whether I got voted down or not, it still should've came to the board before the contract was signed. And I know you have the right to do that, but I still feel the board should know. We shouldn't get it through an email.
That's, that's fair. I, I will agree to that, yes.
Other questions? You all set, Jay?
I'm all set.
I'll sit by. All right, thanks, uh, Bill. Anything else, Bill, or are you all set now?
Uh, I think I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Um, Aaron, do you wanna go for DPW?
Sure. Uh, the DPW guy's been busy the last couple of weeks finishing up Dog Park. Um, the playground is now complete, uh, equipment's all in, molten's all in. Um, reset the stuff that had been moved to accommodate the, uh, construction. There's a little bit touch-up of, uh, topside and stuff to be down there. Uh, the kids are all over that whole playground, so we're happy for that. Um, without grading, um, in between the weather and whatnot, um, trying to keep up with the equipment, could've maintained and, uh, keep it clean and presentable. Um, the other thing, uh, Bocha was in the area recently in a municipality, so I asked the boys to spend extra time, making sure that we had no low-hanging fruit hanging out there, um, in our facility. So, it's been a bit of work for them as well. Water department's been busy, uh, getting shut-offs, rocking and rolling. Um, there'll be, I think, starting to turn wrenches hopefully tomorrow. Um, the way with not having a full staff up here, it's been really hard on Eileen to get everything in and out, and Joe as well, to get all the notices out and get everything put together for that, so. Uh, showing a bit more use of water over the last few weeks from the plant. Some of which is usually, most of which is usually expected will be in the spring, especially these hot weekends and such. Pools, pools are being filled and stuff like that, so, um, nothing we're concerned about yet, but, uh, something to keep an eye on for sure to see if there's a trend to it that we can track or not.
How is the, uh, how is even final level just in general?
I'd have to take something up there to try. That lake, for some reason, doesn't really show too much with things as spring-fed as it is.
Yeah.
Um, doesn't, I don't think it fluctuates nearly as much as we would think. Um, but, uh,
It has in the past, I mean, we've had dry years, you know, we've had it, but it's just nice to know ahead of time.
Yep, well, I know the last time there was a call-up to see how bad it would be, um, I know Tom Donovan did the math one day. Were years and years of droughts before we're even close to worrying about the intake, even coming close to water level, so. Definitely something we keep an eye on, but rated at the moment, it's nothing that we're concerned about right now. I know there's other areas that it's affecting them. Um, so, definitely something to keep in the forefront. Uh, wastewater plant carries here. Um, we're getting down to the final touches. Um, they were talking about actually starting to put gravel back in our roadway cuts to get ready for some pavement. Um, so with that, you know, that's a good sign that we're coming to the end of project. Most of the equipment is back online. There's a couple pieces still here and there that are missing, um, just startup, mostly. And then finishing touches. Um, the big deal we're working on right now is with the remainder of the grant money, trying to get our garage up to snuff. So in the cold storage building down there is where the chemicals for the disinfection of the wastewater is. So our, um, chlorine and sodium bisulfite, which dechlorinates the water. We're trying to get that room upgraded to code so that our operators aren't having to deal with an environment that's not friendly to their well-being, so. Um, right now, that's gonna push out the end of project, possibly to September, October, just due to the timeframe of delivery of equipment needed to make that happen. Um, as long as everything down there, delivery on equipment timeline has been the driver for us. Not being done right now. They'd be done right now down there if all the equipment could've showed up on time. We had a, uh, gate valve, a couple gate valves show up within this last month that were ordered over a year ago. So, uh, once all this stuff comes through, that, uh, plant, I think, is gonna be,
The project itself is still, I mean, as far as the actual project is still on time, more or less, right?
Yes.
I mean, other than things that you're missing.
There'd be, I think they were, were, were ahead of schedule.
What about the, the ditch? Was that been filled in?
It's all done.
It's all done, okay.
All done. All done, so.
All right.
They're ahead of schedule, minus this additional stuff, so. And a little budget as a tool, so. Um, but right now, it's grant money, so we're gonna make sure that, that plant is as rock-solid as it would need. Because they're, in the initial start of it, New Year's scoping is, you know, this is how much money we have, let's get what we can. Well, prices came in low enough, and we've been working it really well, so there's enough for us to eat away a little bit more of those pieces that weren't really looked at in the beginning, so we're open to lock that place out by the time we're done. So, it'll be perfect, hopefully.
Okay.
We're as close to it.
Great. One other quick question. The chemical tanks at the water, the water plant. What do we, I mean, yeah, the chemical tank, we're talking,
Yeah, except the water plant.
Have they got any prices or anything on that?
We have, uh, some rough quotes back, but the price point that they're at requires us to go bid. So Mike and I have to sit down and put, fit proposals together to get that out. Um, and then the, uh, the electrical end of it, um, the guy that he had been talking with sent us back a proposal just to come in and investigate what's going on now to start their plan.
Right.
And that number again was, it's, it's high enough that,
Scares you?
Unfortunately, we have to write a, by the purchasing policy, have to write another bid spec to call out for other people to look at it and say,
As long as you don't have to be stuck.
Uh, so that's, it's almost worth starting, unfortunately. But we'll see. I know, uh, part of this, if we're to go that in-depth, and my apologies, I haven't been right with Mike going hand-in-hand with it, because I've been busy trying to get this project done down there. Um, with the infrastructure money and that stuff that's out there, I might go, I understand we talked about using some of our capital money to go get what we need done now, but start the process of looking at what the plan needs overall, and making sure there's a plan of what we should do up there ready. So if infrastructure money drops, we can say, oh, look, we already know what we need to do.
Yeah.
Let's get it done, so.
Good.
You said the playground was done. I, last I checked, we were waiting for a handle for the, the restroom to, in order to get, turn the water on and get in there. Has that been,
Water's on in the bathroom.
And the bathroom's open?
Uh, I don't know, she, Nicole said she was gonna hopefully have them open last Friday. Uh, the handicap end is not at the moment. The toilet has a leak in it somewhere that we have to try and get it out. Um, but the regular rooms are ready for work.
Okay. Okay, other questions?
Uh, I was gonna ask this, um, roundtable, I'll do it now. Uh, is it, would it be possible to sweep the parking lot, the free parking in that backside of the park just before the helicopter lands, you know, like a day or?
Morning goes down.
Yeah, I mean, no, I mean, I, I'd hit it again.
All right.
Um, just before the helicopter lands for the parade, maybe that week.
Say we just, they, I had them up there pick up room last month, or this Monday, after it rained, to try and keep it down. If we get some more rain between now and Memorial, that I,
I just, you know, I, I remember one time when a helicopter landed, and there were some ugly folk with stones going. So it would be good just to, just to touch it up if you can.
Yep.
Thank you.
One more thing on, well, I got two things really. The bobcat. We gotta start tailoring it when you're taking it places. Just running this way up to the cemetery, we're gonna tear the cleats right off that, and they're not cheap. We've got a trailer, we bought a trailer, so let's use it and not run that up and down the road all the time. Because it's, you know, running on dry pavement all the time. Now, he was up, I saw him up in the cemetery the other day. To drive it from the town barn to the cemetery, that's a lot of, a lot of running on pavement with those rubber cleats. I'd like to see it start being moved with a trailer. And what's the status with the water in the cemetery?
Boys, there's schedule to dig tomorrow morning.
Okay. I would really like to see that put on earlier. I'd like to see it put on by first of May.
Turn, turn the water on and stuff.
Turn the water, you get, because there's so many people in there from others, they put flowers out. put flowers out and they're hauling water and down there, you don't like.
The biggest reason why it hasn't, is it just on right now is because we have to dig and fix the leak at the end of the year.
I'd just like to see it planned so we can get it open by first of May every year. Okay.
We'll drop it, we'll drop it in late May, late April.
For first of May, because, you know, you're, everything's thawed by first of May, so you're not gonna have to worry about anything going deep enough to freeze it, you know, I'm sure Saw Galvin, he's quite up there, I imagine. Or is it, is plastic?
Might be black plastic, I'm not 100% sure. We, I've never dug on in the cemetery, I know we always deal with right there where the turnoff is going, whether it's the bleeder or the shut off to go in there to begin with, so.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, what's the red flags for our Forest Street?
Those are the underground markings for the, so the, yeah, Forest Street paving. That whole road had to be dig safe for us to go up there to do our ditching and all that stuff, so the red flags would be the underground utilities going to and from people's houses.
I thought that's what it was at first, and then I was afraid that's where you're gonna put your ditch into, you know, I was a little nervous.
We stay away from those flags as best we can, because they're there for a reason. That's dig safe, mark out the stuff that's in our way.
All right.
Okay, all right, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Town manager report?
Again, everybody stole my thunder, so this should be quick. Last on May ninth, I spent some time up at the high school for their career fair. That turned out to be a lot of fun, I was a little nervous, I've never done something like that, but it was a pleasure to see the kids and talk a little bit about Fairhaven and what municipalities can offer for employment, so hopefully I've made an impact. Audit process, you'll see that, that will start at the end of this week, Thursday, she's here on the nineteenth. From Nemrick, we contracted with them to help us, Eileen and I manage the accounting system while we're looking for a new accountant, and also make sure that our audit is in, in good shape, so. I have been talking with Nemrick and our auditor just to let them know where we're at, and we are pulling information for them now. That's where that is. Flashing light near the grade school, we were helping the school get that put together, they said the check is on the way for that, there was an accident that knocked over the flasher, check's on the way and we'll, we'll work with the school to get that reinstalled. For anybody that was following the saga of the wild squirrel upstairs in Town Hall, we did catch the squirrel, we can put that to rest finally.
He was free.
He was free. Was there something put on place so they keep it back in there again?
It's on the soffit, no. We do, we do, we still have traps up there just in case, but no, it's a possibility again.
Alright.
Oh, am I done? Did we install the fountain today? Because the fountain is installed, I went over and harassed staff a little bit, they like it when I do that. Dog Park, the dog park was here, they said they raised a lot of money, what they didn't say is it was over a thousand dollars for the project.
They said, I think I saw sixteen hundred?
It was, it was a ton of money. So, yeah. She said June fifth for their grand opening, Bosch is here in the area. Welsh, so this was exciting, the Welsh office did forward, one of our projects that we submitted to Congress for congressional funding, they forwarded, they forwarded the Town Hall project. We asked for another $250 to finish the upstairs.
Two fifty, $250?
$250,000.
Thousand dollars, there you go.
No, $250,000, we asked for that money. They did not send the Adam Street Bridge to Congress for funding though, so for some reason, people don't want to fund their bridge. June seventeenth, we've been working with the Historical Society and a lot with Lorraine, very close with Lorraine to help bury Mr. Hamilton, so June seventeenth, that's when that's happening.
Juneteenth?
Is that Juneteenth? There you go.
Another holiday.
Yep. Lights in the Park, I asked.
More holidays.
I asked for Lights in the Park, I asked for an update on that. He got back with me and said, I don't have an update, but I'll find out. So we're right in that time period when we should see movement on Lights in the Park. Town Hall renovation, the elevator shaft goes in on Monday, or they start on Monday. Playground replacement, that's done, I got the, I have the invoice that needs to be paid, then I'll be, it's a grant reimbursement, so I'll be requesting reimbursement for that from the feds. Sidewalk downtown, the RFP was sent to DeBois and King, we're waiting for their response. And that's it.
At the moment, putting them in to start side work.
Solar project?
The solar, yep.
Good, so they got the panels?
They're moving in for site work, I think a big piece of equipment showed up today already, they should be here by the end of the week to start stumping, grinding all the stuff that's up back and then starting to level off. There's a few more piles from the wastewater project that'll be out of there before the end of the week. Our guys were down there today as well, moving more of the compost piles out of the solar area in order to our new composting area, so.
That's the one where, once those panels go up, it goes from like 1,000 a year to 9,000 that we get, so there's a revenue coming in, so that's a, that's a good one.
Okay, questions for Joe? All right, thank you, Joe. No old business. Got it all done. New business, we've got a, kind of the first read of our purchasing policy. Is there anything you want to highlight on that, Joe, or things that you should consider for change?
No, nothing specific, just that this is something we started last year with, with the previous board, just going over our policies, and this is just a continuation of that. We want to make sure everything's up to date. For purchasing, this is kind of an important one, especially with ARPA rolling through. If ever they, feds ever come to look at how we manage our money, this would be one of the things they look at, so we just want to button that up.
I guess my question was, is everybody comfortable with the, the parameters, the 2,000 to 5,000, 5,000 to 7, 7,500?
I have some recommendations for changes.
I think that some may hinder some of the work they're doing, like Aaron was just speaking of some of it.
Changes, they'd be able to do the work.
Yeah, this is 2014, so, you know, prices have gone up, that's what I was wondering.
We might have to call the guys to get gas for certain reasons. My minivan was nine bucks the other day and I chose, so.
Yeah, I gotta fill it.
Aaron, how about like the electrical work up at the water plant, how, how far off is that of this for going up to bed?
The initial proposal was over $10,000, between 10 and 15, so that way we don't throw budgetary numbers out there for.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
For the initial scope of work study to be done was between 10 and 15,000 dollars.
That's, that's to get an idea of what needs to be done and schedule out.
How to schedule, how it's gonna break up, so that would be someone coming in there and digging through the schematics versus what, what's currently hooked up and what isn't and how it was supposed to be, was in the 10, 10, 15,000 dollar range, so right away, right away it puts a stop on the project to, now we gotta write RFPs, get it out, bid, bring it back and go through it all a bit, so.
Sometimes those are hard because you don't really save money, because you, you might not get the guy that you've been working with forever, and you've got to bring that new person up to speed.
And somebody that's familiar with that in particular, especially that old's.
So I would agree, I think there could be some.
Should we go to 15,000 on that instead of 10?
Yeah.
And this is just for the first read, but I, I think definitely these.
This is what, exactly the right thinking of saying, look at those and think of today's dollars, like the quote you just gave us, the ballpark, you have to, you'd have to be 10 to 25K in order to.
But if that would free up some time, and like Chris just said, keep your same guy on board, that's the started, that you've started with, you know, I mean, if, if we got to 15,000, I think that's something we should look at. I mean, it's not getting any cheaper, let's face it, I mean, nothing's getting cheaper.
No.
There, the, the other thing that, in this policy, there's a, there's a right to rescind the policy too, so if, if it makes sense to do that.
Oh, yeah, for specific items?
Yeah. So.
That's true.
It's not, it's not a, it's not an end all be all, it's just that, we don't want everybody to get comfortable just saying, yeah, go ahead and get your favorite guy every time, or something like that.
We like to shop because at the end of the day, our budgets are what we get to work with, and if we spend it all on our favorite guy and we don't get to do any work, then we're gonna be in trouble.
Yep.
Okay.
It's the game plan that we take, we look at and send our.
I think we should do what we've done with the past, is if you have recommended changes, you, you send them to Joe or stop in and talk with Joe, and Joe can incorporate those on the, on the next draft, but I would be in favor of some of the dollar figures of, I don't know what they would be, Glenn had some on his, but.
Just, just for talking, talking purposes when we get there, yeah. The other one, because this policy overall looked pretty good and touched all the, all the bases, didn't know if the, upfront, it was just a little cleanup of, of where it talked about the, the purpose, so as long as we're doing our policies, usually most of them start with a, with a purpose statement, so, and, but there's also an opportunity for us to put in the way we did, looking at, there's this affirmative action and local preference, in other words, there's some verbiage around when you can look at local people to get your quotes and get there, that the LCT came out with some, with some proposed language, I think would, might be worthwhile for us so we can get things done smoother.
A bit of conversation this morning on that, we do have an item that's supposed to be replaced for line one, that there's a local vendor that we, you know, really like to work with at the town, because they pay taxes on this town, so, I mean, if they can meet the criteria and keep us well within the workability of it, that would be something I would hope the policy would reflect, that we do stuff like that in the best interest of the town, I think, is whenever you read any policy, it's the lowest, most possible, best for the town.
I think, even though sometimes it may cost us a little more, but we do business with people that are in town, you know, I mean, it's, they pay taxes, so, I mean, if you can get something where, you know, if, I'm not saying if they're thousands and thousands of dollars over, but you know, a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there, it's not a big deal.
All of the reason.
Right, you know?
Other than that, follow this to the liver.
Okay, so yeah, share your thoughts with Joe and we can.
I, I do think though that the 10 should be raised to 15. I think that's, you know, some of the other numbers should be raised, that's what I'm saying, so we can give a little bit of wiggle room, so you can.
$2,000 doesn't get you out of, doesn't get you out of a bouchon.
Well, $2,000 with a truck, you can't fill up a fuel today, so, you know.
Put it out the better, you can't fill up. Kind of bet it out. All right, water sewer budget. So last meeting, we got kind of the drafts, first draft, and.
I was looking up, mainly, once again, it's, it's, there's very little room, because there's, you know, there's such a big percentage of this that's, has to be there. I think if you went through, you know, even nickel, trade a nickel, you're not gonna save that much money, I, that's the sad part, it's just.
If you find any nickels, I know where to put them.
Actually, the thing I, I wanted to ask, are, are we okay with some of the fuel guesses?
I would've thought so, up until this last week, I didn't realize gas was gonna go up to $4.50 a gallon, I would've thought.
Or 69.
I don't look at it when I go buy a truck, doesn't need fuel, I don't look, so we're to, yeah, so I thought we had hit the climax and we were gonna start a trickle effect down a little bit, I don't think, I don't think from what I've talked to anybody, vendors or otherwise, any of the products we used, what it's gone up, it's not gonna even come back, we're supposed to have that. It'll be a long time before, if we ever see those prices again.
The other question I had related was petroleum based chemicals that we use, are we okay there as well? And I don't even know if there is any, to be honest.
So, petrol oils and stuff like that, quantities are not.
None of the chemicals are petroleum based.
The chemicals we're running out petroleum based to, to the water.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay, that makes sense.
So just, yeah, this would be the motors, the air boxes.
Yep, okay.
If we had 50, we don't even have 50 gallons of petrol oil, probably in all of this system.
Right, okay, yeah, that makes sense. I'll not copy one.
And the one thing that I had to ask, I think a bit of it got cut, was our sewer lines. And I'll, I'll stand on that rock, that I, our six and a half million dollar plant upgrade is awesome, but the day comes when we aren't getting the flow down there anymore because our lines are failing, it's gonna be a tick.
I'm hoping that this, the infamous infrastructure money that we keep hearing so much about, but nobody knows how much or where or when, we, we need to be ready to jump.
All the cities are getting it. Yeah, all the big, the big cities are getting the money.
But if there's, we need to be ready if something opens up for us that we just jump.
For me, it's the planning aspect, I don't think we can do it in.
A budget, 100% in the budget would be to get a full scope of the system, we haven't had a review of the entire collection system since, I think in the nineties, the last time the camera was run through every inch of pipe. And I don't even know how much of that work was followed up on, beginning with event recommendations of that one, so. Anything we can get closer to that, like I said, with the water plant, having a report of some or a scope of work and this be done, ready for when infrastructure hit to say, you got the money, we got the projects, it's not a, oh, the money's coming down, let's figure out where we can spend it, it's already labeled on that piece of paper that this is where it needs to go.
Well, right now, we have what was left over from the high priority water line stuff, right? We have that, what, kind of second or third phase, there was.
So we're, we're still not completely all of that, is what we're looking at right now, River Street was on that as well, that one's not there at the moment, that one unfortunately got, that was higher on the list, but got thrown out because of road event repaid the year before, so they said, well, there's no sense in putting a new water line there because everyone's gonna be in trouble for that one. Right now, yes, the high priority Main Street prospect is, we're working on that currently to get that figured out.
I'm just saying that if, if, if stuff showed up, if the, if the infrastructure money showed up, we'd have that to deal with.
Have that to grab some.
Okay. You make good stuff.
When I was looking at the water paperwork that came out, on the end of it, where it had, under the water, it had sewer reserve allocations and, is, is that a typo when it should be water reserve allocations and water under 90, 97, 90? Because when I went into sewer, there's another on, and that was on page three of three, it's the last thing that was there, but it said under the water, it was mentioning sewer, I, I didn't know if it was a typo.
Oh, sewer reserve, oh, I see what you're saying.
But it's under the water.
It says water capital improvement.
That's sewer reserve.
Oh, that's funny.
But then, well, well, because I figured it must be a typo, because I went under sewer and there's a 97, 90 under sewer that says sewer reserve allocations, but the dollar amounts are different.
Different amounts.
So it, I think it was just, it just needs to be water, water.
Yep.
I, I know it's nitpicking, but. But when I looked at the whole thing, it looked like for both of these, it's pretty much the salary thing on this other sheet you gave us was probably the largest increase. That's, that's where we're, we're gonna be, that page you gave us that broke down the rates.
Yeah, 100% in both water and sewer, your increases were predominantly labor. There was, to Aaron's point about the sewer lines, I did flat fund that to try to find somewhere we could reduce the rate there, sorry, but yeah, mostly it is, it is labor.
And there was a third page we handed out, the, on, it's called Labor Costs Across Departments. I was a little confused by what I was reading up on top, but the, there, it looks like it was just showing, what, sewer, sewer and water lines that, that the DPW possibly worked on, that is what you were trying, because they had the rest of the DPW stuff sitting there, so in yellow, I said, okay, it must be the work that they charge back so we don't forget that this is getting, this is a part of our water and sewer.
Sure. So, so if we take, let's just say we take one per, let's say we take Aaron, just as the example, there are percentages on each one of those lines, labor lines, that's the percentage that Aaron, if we just had one person and it was Aaron, that's the percentage of time Aaron would work on each one of those things. So 21% would be, or 27% would be summer work, 14% would be winter work, all totaling up to 100% of his time. And that's so, we don't, we're not double dipping on salaries, we need to make sure, because DPW does water and sewer lines, we can't charge out 100% of salaries in. and sewer lines, we can't charge out a hundred percent of salaries in like the O one O and O three O budget and then also have DPW salaries in the water budget. Does that make sense? That would be more than what the total salaries would be.
Yep.
I hope I explained that clearly. This is the most difficult part of this budget.
You're just allocating Aaron's, with Aaron's example, him over the all four departments.
Exactly.
So.
Based on historical workload?
We run above five, we run five year rolling average, especially with, there's some projections made sometimes in that. I see, you'll see it in the sewer lines, I think had the twelve thousand dollars for DPW the one year. That was a big bump because of the repaving in the downtown area here because the guys were out doing a whole bunch of manhole rehab work. So, that soaked up a lot of their time from the summer. So, that bumped that amount up. Again, this year would be somewhat the same if we were to project that with Fourth Street going, there's fourteen manhole structures up there that are being rehab. They're going to be up there doing that work for quite a bit of time. So.
So, when I looked at all that and what's going to happen, it looks like water and sewer, if we we have, if we don't do something different, they're going to, when we talk later about what the rates are going to be and everything in another couple of meetings, it looks like to soften that that increase, aren't we going to have to look at things like, and I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right stuff. I'm saying possibly because we're doing all the renovations up at the wastewater and sewer, can we look at our lowering our sewer reserve amount by a certain amount that's going to help offset some of the increases? Or, just so you know, as long as I have the folks from wastewater and yourself here, I'm saying, hey, what I'm thinking is I looked at the sewer reserve and I'm saying, okay, it looks like we played with that a little bit of went up, came down. And is it possible, let me get to the line that I was looking at, sewer reserve allocation, sewer capital improvement. It looks like we were over, historically, we did forty thousand to twenty-five, twenty-five, we jumped to forty. And I'm saying, boy, we really need need a little bit of break in this budget right here. Can we, can we, we know we have to do sewer capital improvement, can we, but can we take instead of forty, make that twenty-five because we just put a bunch of new stuff up there and everything? I mean, I'm not, I know you're kicking the can down the road. I get it. But I'm saying, there's, there aren't that many levers to keep water and sewer from making a significant jump right here. So, it was one of the things, I don't need an answer, but I think that's one of the things, questions I'd probably be asking when we get there further. The other, I threw three things down there. It says, can you offset by selling more water? I like selling water and making money. Can you lower the reserve and that cushion it a little bit? Then I liked what I heard, I think from Chris, about retiring some debt. Is there one last payment of ninety-two, eight, seventy-four that we could take ARPA funding, pay it off, and it gives us some room to absorb over time some of that increase?
What was the final, didn't you have a figure on what it was going to cost to pay back the debts on whatever we had?
It wasn't a hard, I don't have it in front of me. It wasn't a hard.
I don't have it with me, but.
I'm working.
Meeting or two ago, was it?
Yeah, I'm working with USDA and a local bank who hold our debt, and they're sending me payoffs. Some of them are two, one of them is seven hundred thousand, you know.
Not going to pay that.
But we can pay off a lot of small debt.
That would also show what we're going to save, that's what I'm talking about, right?
It will. It will show all the interest in the payments we can't pay off. I'll bring to the board not only water, not only sewer, but water and other debt that we have. It looks like we could retire a lot of debt with ARPA funds, if if that's what you wanted.
Well, I have, that's one thing I have to agree with these guys on because it's, if we can get it down so we can control our rates a little better, I mean, so we don't have to blast the people that run the water and sewer and still be able to get some of our stuff done that we have to do.
I'm working to to get to board those numbers to see.
Other questions? I mean, there's not a, like you guys said, there's not a ton of places to go.
Not a lot of, I mean.
No.
One question. With the union contract coming, have have the adjustments that the union contractor is going to make, have we made the adjustments on this budget for the salaries?
Yes. This this budget reflects salaries as well as federal tag, the FICA, MEDI, the FICA and MEDI that we have to pay out, as well as VEMRs and, yeah, it's even healthcare. All of all of the extras are in there.
We just went, we just went with our standard, whatever it was. Okay.
Do we think we have to find the six thousand dollars for the other insurance policy?
Yeah.
Exactly.
You guys are good. We'll continue.
Let's move on.
Does the board want to reduce the capital improvement to forty thousand to twenty-five? I don't.
Not yet. I don't.
Let's go through. Sit down and take one time and just go through.
Personally, my, I want to see the payoffs where we, where debt is at and see.
Because we don't want to short it.
No, yeah.
Because as he said, I mean, we could have a line go to heck tomorrow morning and have to replace, no, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, you got to look at the real, this isn't brand new stuff around here.
Plus, the other end of that argument too is, is if we're gonna do a road, let's do as much as the stuff underneath first as we can. And that means we've got to have money sitting there waiting for us.
So, the discussion we had or talked about just a little bit ago, we're talking about a water line that we know we haven't done. There's the same, there's way more sewer line that follows the same path that that pavement project does that really needs a camera all the way down through it and tell us what we need to fix beforehand. Because with the sewer lines, we can do a lot more work without digging the costs. It seems like it costs more, but you're not digging down the roadway. But there is going to be spots where if the camera goes through and says, no, that's a big repair, we're sure ourselves in the foot if we find that out the day after we pay it.
So, you're going to, are you going to run a camera through the sewer lines going down in that particular area?
I'm going to try and get one from all the way through Capitol Hill all the way down.
Right, straight through. Good.
Right, straight through and the whole pavement project to get us a good firm idea. It won't be our camera. And that's where the outside sewer line stuff, it'll have to be a company that comes in that has a camera that can climb and inspect all the inlets and everything else for all the drops from all the customers. So, then we can hopefully have an idea of what we need to fix.
At least you have an idea. Even though it's scary, you still have an idea.
Yeah, well, then we can throw on top of that storm on our system. Those are on the sides of the roads mostly, but they still can cause issues.
Alright, so more discussion to come?
Has the board, you guys remember Kerry, our wastewater plant operator?
He did a good job.
And have you met Eli in the in the back of the room? Eli is our wastewater intern.
I thought he looked familiar.
I saw his picture in the paper just yesterday, I think it was. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just going to ask it because I had never met our operator.
Started a year or two ago, was it? Two years ago.
Time flies.
If I could speak one to the capital improvements too for down the road for our collection system. Our flow's been up a lot lately because of the INI and the state will eventually look at that and say, hey, what's going on down there? So, we just need to actually probably be proactive and address that at a time before the state makes this decision.
It's up because of why?
What was that?
It's up because of why?
We have a lot of INI that's coming down to the plant, so that puts our flow up. And we have to actually report what our flow is every month. We have a minimum and a maximum, or I mean, a maximum that we can reach for an average monthly flow. And if we get close to that, they're going to start asking questions. And part of that is because of the INI that's coming in because of our system failing.
So, this, it's the groundwater coming into our system.
That's, we, didn't we, didn't we do a check on on River Street on a section down through there because we had a lot of water coming in?
They had a report there. We actually earlier, we've been watching it recently because the flows have been so heavy at the plant and keeping the INI on River Street and Adam Street. So, Adam Street, those two pump stations are the ones that tell tales that tell us you're pumping river water up. We've been watching them over the last few, a month now, a month now, there's almost, there's not much water coming through there as you would think. It's all coming from this end of town. So, whether, and Fabians was doing test sites for Dunkin' Donuts up there. They ran in groundwater really high. And I said, well, that's where all my water's coming from, is from all this high groundwater.
I think we have a lot of high groundwater right now. Everybody, Pete says we're getting dry, but I don't know. I don't know. You dig a hole and it's wet.
Well, speaking of the cemetery, I helped a guy set up a cremation this Saturday. And I was looking at the roadside going, wow, it's dry down here ready. But if you dig down half a foot.
Yep, it's still wet, wet.
It's wet.
I know when you walk across your lawn, you feel yourself sinking, you know, damn mother of a lot of water.
Anything else you guys want to add, Esber?
So, Eli being the intern is down at the plant twenty hours a week. He's been through the classes to, when he comes of age, can take the test and be a certified operator. He'll have the hours in to hopefully have his license. And unfortunately, we don't have a full-time position for him. We get to, we can work the own thing.
What, what is the age, eighteen, a chapter B?
Because it's the pro, or not, the license is through this state's Office of Professional Regulation. So, you need to be an adult to take their test and have their licenses.
But if he's, if he's got, he's a gun author, they can just whip it. As soon as he's eighteen, he can do it.
Do right there.
Nice.
Great.
It's a great program, both water and wastewater.
The nice part is that even if we couldn't keep him, we have the license.
Got the credential to go out and do something very well.
They'd remember us as soon as they have it. How great we work.
Well, that's a great program. And I hope it, I hope we can continue it even, you know, it's, because it's just, it brings the school people back into the area and give them some interest to stay here, you know?
Great. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I have a quick question. Are you talking about I and I, I and I, two letters?
Yep.
Let's see.
Parking lot, any parking lot items? Round table?
Let's see. I went through most of it, but trailer park. When is we shut the water off?
So, for the trailer park, like Aaron alluded to, we we did get the notices out a little late. For the trailer park, they need to be able to come in and speak to the board of selectmen to set up a payment plan. The residents need to speak to the to the selectmen. So, they'll be in on the thirty-first to ask for that.
But the payment plan isn't going to help us take care of the previous bill. And if we don't, what do we have for for leverage to get that bill paid? I mean, the the rest of the people that's on the water system can't continue to foot the bill for this.
The only real leverage we have are to turn the water off. And then the ordinance does allow us to sell the trailer park for water. But I mean, there are taxes. It's they already, they owe twenty-six thousand in taxes. So.
What's the water as of now?
Four, I want to say forty-two.
And then we've got one coming up. Three meters now. No, June, June, you're beyond meters.
Those are, those are out. Those have already been out.
They have been out for this, oh, they're doing, they're doing the end of June, right? Something like that. Yeah, anyways. So, the new bills are, that's what I'm saying.
These are the ones that have turned delinquent now. So, now we go to shut off. So, these are the bills from this past reading. So, we'll come back around and read in June.
Yeah, okay. So, then that's when it's due, the thirtieth of June. Because it's due before the first, before the budget changes.
So, the tenants are the only ones that have the ability to come to the back to the board for a payment plan?
Yeah.
The property owners, they've already gotten their war, their last warning for turnoff?
Yeah, the the individual, yeah, homeowner, yes.
But if you're a tenant, then you have the right to come and pay on behalf of your.
And that's, so that was for all rental.
Right, I believe that's how.
So, okay, on this situation here now, there's only one meter up there, correct?
Should be.
So, they'd have to split the meter between all the people that are there. Is that the way you'd have to look?
They'd have.
They'd have to keep the current bill current, correct?
Yes, they'd have to keep the current bill current and make payments on the back.
On the back, okay.
Let's be realistic. That's not going to happen.
No, they won't. It's, I've been here going on five years now, and every time we've brought them in, somebody's come and said, we want to make a payment. I have yet to see one payment.
I don't think I can afford it. And I was going to ask this around table too. I'm, you're going to get sick of hearing me say this, but we need to prepare those people for inevitable.
That's why the notice has got to go. Some kind of a written thing has got to go to them.
They've had delivered.
They have.
The red slips have been delivered.
And they may choose not to come to the board. I mean, that's up to them. Whether they say they're coming on when?
The third, no, no, they haven't told me anything, but the third first is their opportunity.
Okay, so I think we should probably wait until that one, that, and to see where they're at.
Yeah, I I just think we should be prepared to speak.
No, I would agree.
The truth to those guys. I mean, I, they're in a horrible situation that that we can't continue to subsidize. I think that's the, I think that's the honest thing. And then I don't know, I'll ask again, what what services we can find. And I really, we really need to, it's not ours, it's not ours, but it's, it's, we got to be, we're the ones that are going to look like the jerks. So, we need to be prepared to get them someplace.
I've, Joe, I've gotten emails from Joe from different people. He's, people that he's contacted, different programs.
Yeah, so I have reached out to a couple of state state agencies. One program up in, up in Chittenden County that sounded a little bit more hopeful. They do help rehome people in this situation. I talked to them today or yesterday, whichever day it was. We're going to meet, when I say we, I mean, myself, the gentleman I talked to, and then we're going to get in touch with the housing trust here in Rottland to see if we can't come up with something. Because it's, just to see if we can't find some housing. But it's going to take, the folks that live there are going to have to be willing to move too. Horse to water kind of thing. It's just, you know, we can offer the service, but are they going to take it?
Well, I I get that. I mean, I get all of that. But I, I want our ducks to be in a row and 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 bend over backwards to find, find, at least find where we can point them services. Because I think it's just inevitable that that place is going to fail completely at some point. I mean, it is now.
Yeah. It's definitely a tough situation.
One more quick thing. Our lady over here in the corner with her purple tires. I don't have a problem with purple tires. Is there any way we could ask her to keep her lawn mowed?
No.
I mean, it's.
No, you can't.
Really?
No, there's no ordinance. There's no way we can.
Nothing to say that what they can do or anything like that?
If it becomes, how do you say it, noxious? If it becomes so noxious that it causes a public health hazard, like you start seeing rats and possums and raccoons jumping out of the bushes, then we can make it a health issue, but just tall grass is not something.
What about, what about the, like around the intersection, would that be up to us to cover if they, it's the point where you can't see around, if you come out on West Street?
I would say yes, if it's in the right of way.
If it's in the right of way.
I just, you know, just because it is getting pretty high already. And I just, if you can't do it, can't. But I mean, I just ask.
Vermont is very tough with, where I grew up, if your, if your grass grew, it had to be high, don't get me wrong, but this, the town would come through and mow it and then send you a bill on your taxes. So, but we can't do that.
Well, the airport was the other one in the sweep in the parking lot before the helicopter shows was the other one. So, I guess that's it.
I have one, one complaint from a person on Conover Street talking about the telephone poles and the dirt. And Re Mountain Power put the new poles in and the dirt spills over onto the sidewalk and is sitting there. Just wanted to pass that concern on. I told him I was, that I don't know if they might be coming back to tamp it down or pick it up or. It looks, it looks like that once they got done, they didn't clean up their mess.
With the new poles?
The new poles on Conover, so if that's the case, just, just to call, clean up your mess, would be, would be kind of nice, yeah.
I'll check with it.
Thanks.
Um, review of finance report? Is there bills to be paid properly?
Probably.
Alright.
Have to.
That's good.
It's one way to, one way to get the reserve account back up.
Yep.
Uh, okay, make a motion to do the pay, pay the payroll of thirty-two thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Second.
Uh, motion by Bob, seconded by Jay to authorize the payroll warrant, questions on that? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries with.
One abstain.
One abstain, okay, and general fund?
General fund warrant, uh, make a motion to pay general fund warrant of a hundred and three thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
I'll make it, I'll second it with the, there's a thing in the.
On the top.
What the extras were.
Okay, uh, so motion by Bob, seconded by Jay, and there are some.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it was Blue Cross, um, I think the payment on the sewer plant.
Blue Cross pump station was eleven thousand, and then the excavator payment was fifteen thousand fifty-two.
I just want to prove, so it's not all, you know, so we know where it is.
Okay, uh, any other? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye. One abstain.
Motion carries?
Um, the checkbook status is one million ninety-two thousand two hundred and one dollars eighty-two cents.
We must have a school painter come.
They, they sent me the, uh, what, what we owed them after the packet was closed, so next meeting, that would be gone. It's a five hundred and seventeen thousand dollar bill this time.
Alright, um, I think we're good there. Uh, resumption of the nuisance dog hearing? Would there need to go back into deliberative session quickly on that, or not?
I would.
Do we have that letter?
We've got the letter.
And I got the letter, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
You're good? I just want to.
The only thing I would suggest that it was addressed to Sean.
Think it should, should address the both?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, two letters.
Two letters.
Well, I, I was looking at the letter and saying, it's going to be CC'd to, if, if it's addressed to Sean who made the complaint.
Oh, true, yeah.
Uh, it had to be CC'd to Carla, our ACO, Mark Dantle, and I would also have Chief Humphreys copied on that. Because that, that would cover what we talk about in the letter.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that.
I say put it down, and you put, and then sign it?
Coming to sign, okay. Um, Glenn, do you, as a clerk, do you want to read just the first couple?
I see, seen, seen that they both can, can, uh, would it work if I quickly read the letter?
Yeah.
Okay, um, it, it's a letter to Sean Galvin from the Fairhaven Select Board, subject is nuisance, nuisance dog hearing. Mr. Galvin, this letter is in regards to the nuisance dog hearing held on May tenth, twenty-twenty-two with the Fairhaven Select Board. The Select Board has determined a dog hearing with the Select Board is not the appropriate venue to address this issue as defined by the ordinance. The Board referred the issue back to the Police Department for ordinance enforcement as defined below. Article two of the Town and Fair Haven, Vermont Animal Control Ordinance defines a nuisance animal as an animal that barks, whines, howls, or cries in excessive and continuous fashion so as to disturb the peace and quiet of any other person. Article seven, the same ordinance prohibits barking stating that it shall be unlawful for any owner of a dog to permit, permit it to disturb the quiet of any person by unreasonable barking and howling. Article eleven of this order, ordinance clearly defines penalties for the above referenced Article seven as a civil ordinance violation and shall be punishable by the following. First offense, a fine of no less than fifty dollars and no more than five hundred. The second offense, a fine of no less than a hundred dollars and no more than five hundred. The third and subsequent offense, fine of no less than two hundred dollars and no more than five hundred dollars. Article twelve, impoundment, dogs in violation of any provision of this ordinance may be taken by the enforcement officer and impounded in the town pound, and they are confined in a humane manner. Should the penalties imposed on the dog owner through Article eleven of this ordinance fail to correct the issue of the nuisance dog, the dog may be impounded by enforcement officers. It is the responsibility of the enforcement officials as defined in Article three of this ordinance to enforce the ordinance. And then it says, please find the attached copy of the full Fair Haven, Vermont Animal Control Ordinance. And it's to be signed by the Select Board.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to review it and come up with a, a pathway here and.
Yeah, so basically, we're directing the Police Department to enforce the current ordinance. And that's the responsibility of the town manager and the Police Department. Correct?
I think, I think. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the, I have forwarded that information out to the police.
I think one of the things we, we found in the ordinance, so everybody understands, is, is that there is no provision for us to have a hearing for, uh, a loud dog. It only, it only, um, speaks to vicious dogs. So that's why, it's not like we're, we're trying to kick the can in the ground, I don't think we have the right to do that.
Not, not a problem.
And that's why we're, that's why we're going back, so graduated fines and, and, and maybe that will take care of the.
Well, I understood there's a pathway through the, the, uh, civil court, the ticket. Pathway, but I, I think the, uh, animal control officer is trying to look at all potential options.
Oh, I, yeah, we got it, we just didn't see it in the ordinance that we could do anything.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Do, do you have any questions or not? I want to give you opportunity, if you do, if not, that's.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was listening, trying to regroup, and, and thank you for including that, um, CCing me, that would be helpful. Um, there are days I feel like I get lashed out of the loop on a lot of things, so I'm always like constantly double checking to see what and where and things like that. Um, I do want to let you know, and you know, if, if you could, I've got a new bark collar, um, that I received yesterday. I haven't had a chance to try it out on her, um, I had to read certain things like that, so I am trying, ideology thinking that I'm not, or that I'm, I'm doing this for any reason. And there's something else, there is something in that corner between you and Schneider, because sometimes I'm out there and she's in this spot, like there's something in like a triangular pattern. So I'm really going to try the bark collar and keep her away from that, just so that you know, um, you know, but I can't control everything, just like today, the dog kennels were fully loud and barking, and mine were inside, and I was at work, so I could hear them quite, um, easily too, so. But if you can give me a little leeway to try this bark collar, and she may bark a little because there's a couple of settings, if not, that's fine too. I just want you to know that it's something that is, is something that I am trying.
I, I get it, it's just that I'm, I'm done coming home and my wife being in tears because she can't sleep.
Well, I, I don't know.
It's been resolved, we have a pathway, and that's unconcerning, we'll go from there, hopefully the, the bark collar works. If not, ah.
Alright, well, I appreciate, thank you for both coming in. Um, I don't know if we need to close the dog hearing, but I'm closing the dog hearing at this point in time.
I have another question though, how does an ordinance get changed? Since other towns do have regulations when it comes to nuisance dogs? When it comes to timeframes and times and length of barking and things? How does something like that ever get resolved, and why the other towns can do that?
Uh, ordinances can be changed, um, I don't know if this board hasn't even discussed it, it would be a vote of the board in the, of changing.
We, we didn't, and I probably don't, that had, if the board saw a need to change the ordinance, we would. I'm going to speak for myself, I, I look in the board, the, the ordinance seems very clear. And, and, and that means in, in mind that if you, if, if nuisance barking, regardless, if, if that's what we're trying to, to fix, the, the, the nuisance, if, just, if it were to continue, that's why you, the impoundment piece is included. It's removed, the nuisance barking is there, and that's, that's what, the ordinance is very straightforward and very, it, um, if followed, I don't believe we would be si, we would have been sitting here. And I, I will, I will tell you, my frustration as a Select Board member is to look at an ordinance that I didn't feel was followed, and, and hear the rules, follow the rules. And that's for everybody in the, in the process.
So in general, ordinances are changed by the Select Board with public hearings? And then the, the board votes on it, and it's a sixty-day, I believe, period? Before it, uh, becomes official.
I also had a lawyer look over it, and he also said, hey, so that there should be more information in there, and I don't live in the city, I live outside on Scottsdale, and I'm surrounded by animals. And I'm not the only dog owner, so, and I'm not dissing anything with him, I, I do take responsibility for my dogs. And I do apologize that this has caused inconvenience for him, but I can assure you, he's not the only one. Um, and I'll work on it, that's, that's not a, that's not a problem, and I'm sorry your wife cried, I, I don't know what to tell you.
Alright, I'm, the, the dog hearing's over, thank you, hopefully, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Um.
Oh, when does the letter go out?
We've got to get in here to sign it, so probably either tomorrow or Thursday. Yep, yep, we'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item was executive session for personnel, uh, for labor relations and for, um, employment.
Sure, you want a motion?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for personal labor, one DSA three thirteen A one. And to also, while in executive session, do the evaluation of appointment, appointment, one DSA three thirteen A three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Glenn, seconded by Jay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion carries.